We're going to bring this city council committee meeting to order. I would ask first for Mr. Harris to do a roll call of the members.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Ballantyne.
Here.
Ms. Gregg.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Kuperah.
Here.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President Reichenbach.
Here. The approval of the minutes for the November 14, 2019 committee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, council comments? Hearing now, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Kuperah.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. We'll move right into Personnel Committee. Councilor Diaz.
Yes, Mr. President. Currently, the land bank authority, I had a conversation with Mayor Sarachi, and she has no objection to move this to committee meeting on January committee meeting. And the reason why is because I've had, I'm not going to say threatening, but I did have a few people get very upset. It had to do with people that are not qualified for certain boards. So, to give more time to look at people that do qualify for these particular boards, this particular land bank, I would like to move that to January's committee to look at some other applications.
Do we vote on this, or? No. No. Okay.
And then, we have Crystal Weaver, Nancy Neff, and Alicia Byler nominated for reappointment as the Downtown Investment District Authority, and Laura Proctor nominated for appointment to the Downtown Investment District Authority. So, I basically am making a motion for these to be appointed.
So, move.
Yep. There you go.
Laura.
Oh, is she here?
We have a new appointment. She's here tonight.
Would you like to come up and speak to us?
Hi, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to start with a little recap for everybody about what we did?
Yes. Thank you very much this evening, everyone.
Sorry to interrupt, just to remind you, speaking to the microphone as much as you can just because we're recording live for the audience now. So, if you have the opportunity.
Thank you so much, sir. I will do that, yes. Thank you for having us this evening. I am Dave Angel from Executive Director of the Lancaster Downtown Investment District Authority. And before you this evening, we have three current board members who are looking to stay with us and continue the momentum that we are doing right now with a new plan that will be coming into effect in 2021, and also a strategic plan we have undertaken in the last couple of months. And I believe this is actually the first strategic plan of the Lancaster Downtown Investment District. So, we're very excited, and the three incumbents that are on the board now are very excited to continue the work that they started with that. And that is Crystal Weaver, who is our Board Chair, Nancy Neff, who is our Board Treasurer, and Alicia Byler. They've been board members for several years, and they want to continue their involvement. And we had one board member who will be leaving us at the end of this year, Scott Standish. He's been very active with the DID for almost 14 years. So, we're very sorry to lose Scott, but his workload has definitely taken over a lot of his spare time. So, Scott is sorry, but he is, Scott is going to stay with us to help with that strategic plan as well. He feels that's a very worthwhile cause, so he's going to stick around. But he was able to find someone else in his office, and we're very glad to have Laura Proctor join us. County being one of the larger employees of the city, we would very much like having someone from the county government offices as part of our, part of our board. So, we're very glad that Laura is able to join us, and she was excited to join us. So, if you would introduce yourself to the council.
Sure. So, I was just saying to Dave earlier, I have been living in the city for two years and change. I've been working in the city for two and a half years. I hail from Downingtown, so it's a little borough next county over. And I work in the County Planning Commission in the Community Planning Division, so not in Scott's division. Like, you're sorry. But in a sort of analog division that works in conjunction with his. And I work with 12 municipalities throughout the county, one of which is the City of Lancaster. I inherited from one of the other senior community planners. So, I love, I love working with the city. I also live in the city, and I, I was really honored when Scott asked if I'd be interested in, in joining the DID. So, yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any, or?
Any questions from the committee?
No, but I just want to say thank you for agreeing to be on the board, and I think you make a great asset to the Downtown Investment District.
Sure, thank you. Thank you so much.
Likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, then, if Mayor no questions, anyone from the public? Well, then, we'll move this then to Tuesday's meeting with full council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Clarify that was for the three reappointments and the new appointments?
Yes, yeah, the three reappointments and then the new appointment. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move right into Public Works. Councilor Ballantyne.
That would be me, yes.
Can I, can I just say sentimentally, this is the last time opening up a committee meeting.
This is, as I, yes, this is a month of last things, yes.
We're just all going to cry, the three of us just crying as we do it, so.
Some more than others.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works is now in session. Administration Resolution Number 66, 2019, appointing a Director of Public Works. Mayor, I believe you have that one.
Yes, so, our directors as part of the municipal code are approved by council, and you have before you a resolution appointing Steve Campbell, currently in Washington DC, to the position of Director of Public Works. I understand that Steve was here this weekend, was scoping out a temporary place to live in the city, and is looking to purchase a home as well. And I will be happy to answer any questions, but I think you have all seen his bio and the announcement related to his hire. Any questions?
Questions from the committee?
No.
From the public? Yes, sir.
In the past, this has been a position that's filled by an engineer, and in the past specifically, an engineer's license has been required. He's an architect by training and planner, just wondering how that came to be.
That was a lot of discussion within the Department of Public Works when we were drafting the job announcement. And if you go back and look at the job announcement, it does, it is not required, PE is not required.
It was previously the top of this department.
Correct. And so, that was a change that was made in consultation with the DPW staff and taking into consideration the complement of staff and the educational requirements of those, that position. And so, it was agreed upon very early in the process that that would not be a requirement.
Could you pass me the question? Does the city require that?
You're not supposed to say that.
Any other questions from the public? And may I have a motion then, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Resolution Number 67, 2019, requesting a PAH2O program grant for wastewater treatment Good evening. I assume 67, 68, and 69 are pretty much.
They're all very similar. So, 67 and 68 are both wastewater sewer fund projects. The, the two projects, or the projects that are included in these two grant applications are actually ones that are currently on the 2018 Bond Fund Capital Improvement Plan list. So, the matching funds that would be required would come from 2018 bond funds. The third one for the water treatment plant, that one is for replacement of the membranes at the Susquehanna Water Treatment Plant. The membranes at the Conestoga Plant are in the process of being replaced right now. That project was funded, or that, the cost of that was funded out of the 2018 bond issue. So, we're looking to have the funds from this, which would be 2.3, 2,305,500, funded out of the H2O grant, and the match would be 1,572. That would get funded out of a combination of either operating and/or water fund bond
Questions from the committee?
The first one is wastewater treatment plant project. So, that is the Resolution Number 67 is 3,230,100 dollars. The collections one, which is also in the sewer fund, and I see there's a typo in the title of that, so number 68 is for 1.6 million dollars. There's a zero missing in the, in the number in the title.
I don't have a number right now.
No, no, the, the 1.6 million.
I see a bunch of angry citizens down here. I haven't known that in public art. I have not seen one. Sorry. Not a problem.
Can you help them?
Do you see what I was? Oh, you had a, I'm sorry. I have a different version of, that has a tape on it. And 69 is 2,305,500. Okay.
Just, I guess.
And the water membranes is a system that, of, of trains that are literally fibrous materials that help to clean the water. And so, these were all bought 10 mil, 10 years ago when we established the water, the new water treatment infiltration system, filtration system. And so, they're needing to be replaced, and we are very eager to have support in financing those replacement costs.
Would this also, let me ask a question.
Yes.
Would this have anything to do with possibly having sewage that's actually over, or people are concerned that it's going into our Susquehanna?
Well, our, I'm not sure what you're asking, related to the wastewater investments. Patrick, can you say more detail about?
I don't think any of, any of these projects specifically have to do with.
With our combined sewer overflow.
Combined sewer overflow. It's a, a power system and oxygen controls and chlorine scrubber at the wastewater plant, and then a couple of collection systems, so underground pipes, but not specifically dealing with the, the combined sewer overflow issue itself.
So, when would the project start?
Well, a lot of that's going to depend on whether or not they're grant funded through these, through these, they are in the schedule for, not scheduled, they're on the project list from the 2018 bond issue, the first two, the sewer fund ones. But I don't know the timing off the top of my head, but a timing would be driven primarily by the funding opportunity, right?
Any other questions from committee and council?
Patrick, could you run those numbers by me again? How much were 67 and how much?
Sure. So, number 67, the grant amount would be 3,230,100 dollars. For number 68, the grant amount is 1,600,000.
Okay.
And then, for 69, the grant amount would be 2,305,500.
Thank you, Patrick.
Sure.
Mr. President. And we might, you might not have this information, but has the membrane lasted as long as we thought it would? Did it work the way, because I know that was pretty cutting edge.
Yes. So, the, the Conestoga Plant is getting replaced now. It was expected that those were going to need, be, going to need to be replaced earlier than the Susquehanna ones, because if you know the water quality in the Conestoga River versus the Susquehanna River, you can understand that Conestoga River is.
Siltier.
Siltier, dirtier than the Susquehanna.
More nutrients. Just say more nutrients.
It's more stuff.
More stuff in the Conestoga, and that has an impact on the, the life of the membranes. But they were anticipated originally to last about 10 years. The plants went online in 2010, so we're really pretty much right on schedule.
And we are working through a capital investment plan with Chris Hilditch to look at the regular replacement of the water main, water membranes for both Conestoga and Susquehanna on a, on a time schedule with the supplier of those. So, we're not all doing, we're not doing this all at once every 10 years.
It's going to be difficult to get on that schedule. They're in, they're in cassettes that slot into, well, that drop into slots within the plant. Ideally, we would get on a, you know, replace a couple of those cassettes every year and do that in the operating budgets. But because the original cassettes at both plants were purchased along with the, you know, the renovation or the building of the two new plants.
We got them all at once.
We got them all at once at that time, so getting onto a, a replacement schedule over time. We don't want to replace them early, because that's a waste of money, but we also want to get on a schedule, not replacing them all at once, one lump sum.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question from the public?
Yes, ma'am.
I remember when Mayor Gray actually said he went to visit the water treatment plants, and he was astonished to see that we were still using sand. Could you explain to me, as just a naive public person, but if it had worked for hundreds of years with sand and they weren't having to be replaced in membranes, is there that much that these membranes are really making our water much better than sand?
Yes.
Yes.
Because there's a lot more chemicals that are entering into our waterways that, and the testing has become much more sensitive in terms of maintaining the highest water quality standards. So, it's a combination of those two things together, April, that have led us to this membrane treatment plant. And it is something that, it was a significant investment. It was a $100 million investment, and we rely on it every single day.
Okay. But it is doing its job, and we're all healthier because of it rather than the 100-year-old systems.
Correct.
On however old one it was.
And the water quality is meant to be bottled water.
Yes.
Purified. And if the city can't legally sell the water, but, you know, we could sell it as, as purified water. That's how good it is.
Wow, okay.
I did have a quick question. Is this more or less like the system in New York City?
I have no idea what the system is in New York City.
I mean, you can drink water right out of the tap.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what I'm used to.
Yes, I mean, you can drink this water right out of the tap, too. I don't know what their infiltration system is. They, they have a different, they, they draw their water from a different source. They have reservoirs that are in upstate New York that.
Hundred miles north of the city.
Yeah, that is north of the city. Versus, versus, we draw from the Conestoga and the Susquehanna Rivers. So, it's a very different source.
Susquehanna, muddy water.
I see a water, water plant tour coming.
Yes.
Patrick mentioned a 1.57 million dollar match for Resolution 69, I believe. Wondering if the match is from 67 and 68.
Yeah, so the, the match amounts for the 67 would be 1,619,900. The match for 68 is 800,000 dollars, and the match for 69 is 1,152,750.
Any other questions? Is there any more information about 67, 68, and 69? And we'll just take them one at a time for a vote. May I have a motion to move Resolution 67 to the December 10th meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Administration Resolution Number 68 moved to December 10th. May I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution Number 69 moved to December 10th meeting. Motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and for one final time, Public Works is adjourned.
16 years of service.
But who's counting?
Still have a few meetings yet.
Yeah, yeah, we're not done yet.
Yeah, you still have one more Saturday in you.
All right, well, let's move to another finalist, Councilor Ballantyne, this final finance committee meeting, sir, as far as yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pales in comparison to Councilor Kuperah, so. But without finance, there's five things on the agenda this evening. We'll start with Administration Resolution Number 70, mending solid waste and recycling
So, I, I think what would be, would work, if I go through the over, the budget overview presentation, because a lot of the issues that are in these resolutions are included there, and then if there are questions about the individual resolutions or ordinances, then I can respond to those at that point.
Sounds great.
Okay. I can't believe that worked, Bernie. Okay, those of you, and it's most of you, I think, who are here, have seen me do these overview presentations in prior years. What I've done is basically tried to boil down a 280-plus-page line item detailed budget into about 20 slides that give you sort of a high-level view of what's going on in the proposed 2020 budget, what are some of the significant changes that you see in the budget, and what are some of the, the issues that are out there that we've had to manage or that we're trying to manage within the, the 2020 budget. So, I will, as I said, I'll go through this overview presentation. There are five ordinances slash resolutions that are related to the budget document itself, and so, we'll, I can address individual questions about either of those, or any of those items when I get there. Before I start the overview presentation, though, I did want to make some quick introductions. As you all know, we were awarded a Strategic Management Planning Program grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development. Before we got that award, we had made the decision to bring PFM Consulting Group onboard to do the work of that Strategic Management Planning Program. It has two components, basically a review of our finances and a five-year outlook on our financial picture. And then, the second part of it is a management review, so sort of, as we've been saying, looking under the hood of each department, looking for places that we can be more efficient, we can save money, we can raise additional revenue within the very strict confines that we have in Pennsylvania as a third-class city, and really just see if we're doing all of the things that we need to be doing to be the most efficient operating city government that we can be. So, with that said, and they are not doing any presentation tonight, but they came, they're just observing really tonight, Gordon Mann, Vienn Long, and Shua McLean, right? Okay. I've been working both closely with, with Vienn, trading a lot of financial spreadsheets back and forth with her. They are, their first step is basically doing the financial condition assessment, and we're looking at having them come back to you in January and do a full presentation of that financial condition assessment. So, much more to come from the folks at PFM, and you can pepper them with questions in January when they do their presentation.
Welcome. Thank you for having us out.
Okay, so, this is the sort of one-shot slide that gives you all the highlights of the entire budget. With the general fund budget, we're proposing no real estate tax increase. That always makes everybody happy to have that, the first item on the, on the page. We are continuing to see strong earned income tax and real estate transfer tax revenues coming in, and I'll show you some, some slides on that later. This year, we've been negotiating two of our three labor contracts. The AFSMI negotiations are effectively complete. They have not voted on a contract yet, but that is coming in the very near future. Our police negotiations are ongoing. We've had, you know, we have, we've both had good discussions throughout. Obviously, they are, you know, they are both looking out for the best interests of their members. We're looking out for the best interests of the city and also trying to make sure that we're an attractive place to work, which means providing good compensation and benefits. So, again, those negotiations with police are ongoing, and we are hopeful to have things wrapped up before the end of the year with them. We will with AFSMI have things wrapped up before the end of the year. You've heard a lot of talk about the HUD-led grant. We will begin that implementation in early 2020. We have some additional positions in the general fund budget that have related to those, the services from that HUD-led grant, and then we have some offsetting revenue, and I'll explain a little bit about that later on. And then, later on this year, we're also going to finalize the PPL streetlight purchase, which feels like it's been a decade-long endeavor. It's only been like about four or five years. Ultimately, the idea is that we have better oversight and our own management of the streetlights. There are something like 33 to 3,400 streetlights throughout the city of Lancaster. We are purchasing the vast majority of those, and in addition to being able to have our own maintenance of those lights, there's also a significant cost savings to that. So, the gross cost savings that we will see in PPL rates is about 455,000 dollars a year. And that's not just a one-time savings, that's year in and year out, we're going to see that savings. Right now, we spend about 700,000 dollars a year on streetlight, what we pay to PPL for streetlights. So, we're going to reduce that bill significantly. In Stormwater Management Fund, this is sort of a, Ruth would not like to hear this, but it is, in budget purposes, it is somewhat of a status quo year for solid, for the Stormwater Fund. We're proposing no Stormwater Management Fee rate increase, and we have obviously ongoing green infrastructure and other projects related to compliance with EPA consent decree. In the sewer funds, we do have a proposed rate increase, I'm sorry, we, we are in the, the process of closing out our Public Utility Commission rate increase, which is required, that process is, is required for outside city residents. So, we serve about 3,500 direct build customers outside of city limits, and we are required to go through the Public Utility Commission to get rates approved for those customers. For insides, and I expect that that will be done, and we will have rates in place for outside customers by the end of the first quarter of 2020. For inside-city rate, or inside-city customers, the proposal is for an increase in rates that would affect the average residential customer with an increase of 28.50 per quarter. And I'll get into a little bit more detail about, about what that means, an average residential customer, and how there's a way for customers to mitigate that impact. We have also resolved our long-term bulk sewer billing dispute that we've had for, well, with Eastland Peter Township since 1992, and with Lhasa more recently since about 2009 or 2010. Over the last 18 months, we've been paid a total of almost 5 million dollars from Lhasa as a way, well, as the, as those resolutions have been coming, coming through. And then, we most recently, just about a week and a half ago, got a final payment from Eastland Peter Township, which resolved all of the dispute there. It is great to have that dispute resolved, one, because now when we send a bill for bulk sewer billing to those outside entities, they will actually be paying 100% of the bill that we send them. That was part of the dispute. The other thing is that it has had a significant improvement on our cash flow. The last three years, we've done tax anticipation notes that City Council has approved in December, basically as a short-term borrowing for the first couple of months of the year until real estate tax revenues come in. You will notice one of the things that's not on your agenda is a tax anticipation note resolution for 2020, because we're in much better cash flow position, entering into our, what is traditionally our cash poor time of the year. So, we will not have to do that short-term borrowing for 2020.
And that'll save us about 40,000 dollars.
Right, and, right. So, between water and sewer, which is where the, the cash deficits typically have been, will save about 40,000 dollars in interest costs that we now do not have to pay to a financial institution for that cash flow. And also, just like we have in the Stormwater Management Fund, we have ongoing mandated planning and projects that are continued for the EPA consent decree compliance, and obviously, those ongoing projects have primarily been funded through bond issues that we've done, most recently in 2018, and a good chunk of the rate increase that's required in the sewer fund is related to the debt service on that bond issue. In the water funds, we will also be going for PUC rate case for. In the water funds, we will also be going for PUC rate case for water customers outside of the city in 2020. Unlike the sewer fund, where about eighty-five, ninety percent of the customers are inside the city, it's sort of flipped in the water fund. So about sixty percent of our customers for water are actually outside of the city and under PUC jurisdiction. So that will be a significant rate case, because of the last time we had a rate case was resolved in 2015 with outside customers. We're also proposing an inside rate increase for the, that average residential customer of seven, which would cost $17.70 per quarter, and that's related really to the ongoing capital investments that we've had. We have the Large Diameter Main project that's going on right now, which is building a forty-two-inch redundant water main coming in from our Oyster Point Reservoir out in West Hemfield Township, all the way into the city. And I say redundant, because it's replacing a current main that was built in about the 1950s, that is the source of about two-thirds of the water that comes into the city system. We can't do any major work on that main, as it is the single source of water coming into the city for two-thirds of the system, and if we have a serious problem with that main, we have serious problems. So there's a lot of projects like that that are going on, including main relining and, and some other work. That's been the subject of bond issues that we've done in the last several years. And then in the Solid Waste and Recycling Fund, the proposal is for a rate increase of $5 per quarter for all residential customers that are in the single hauler system, and really, that is driven by two things. One is the upset in the, or the uncertainty in the recycling market that has been the subject of a lot of news over the last year or two, which has reduced the amount of recycling that has picked up at curbside, which has an impact overall on the cost of our system, and then also because we have a new hauler contract that we'll be negotiating during 2020. The current hauler contract is in a second, second-one-year extension after an original five-year contract with Penn Waste, and that was the end of that, that contract term. So we'll be going back out, and again, because of the uncertainty in the recycling market, it's anticipated that those, the cost of that contract is going to go up.
Patrick, just real quick, for the, the diameter, or the, the large main, once we get the new one up and running, is the plan to take the old one offline and just use it as emergency backup, or take it offline and kind of redo it?
I think the, the idea is, they would be redundant, true, you know, live redundant, but that there also is likely a lot of inspection and work that would need to be done on that main. I know that there have been, over time, especially along like Marietta Avenue portion closer to the city, there was a series of main breaks on that, on that main, so it's going to definitely need inspection and maintenance. Be a lot easier when it doesn't have to be the source of two-thirds of the water in the system. So this slide is looking at all of the operating budgets, so all the ones that I just reviewed the, in, in summary, all those operating budgets and how they sort of compare to each other in terms of the, the overall size. So general fund budget, $62.7 million, about fifty percent, fifty-one percent of the overall operating budget of just over $123 million. These pieces of the pie, if you've seen this presentation in prior years, have not been all that much different, although the water and the sewer funds, because of the capital investment in those systems, are growing faster than the general fund is, certainly. Now, this is just looking at the general fund piece, so that fifty-one percent of the pie, and then where the revenues come from for the general fund. Year in and year out, that real estate tax portion of the pie is forty-nine percent, fifty percent, fifty-one percent, and it's right, right around half of the overall revenues that come into the, support the general fund are from real estate taxes. And year after year, we have talked about the fact that we are, because of the current tax structure that we're provided by the state, we are over-reliant on real estate taxes. So typically, the only place that we can go for, to cover the cost of increases that we see in the budget is increases in real estate taxes. There's a whole other effort that we have going on to make some changes to that, so we don't have to be so reliant on real estate taxes, but this is the world that we're operating in right now. I'll show you a slide or two later about earned income taxes. We've, as I said earlier, continued to see nice growth in that. The pilot piece of the pie, $2,175,000, that red slice at the top, probably if you ask the folks at PFM, talk to some of my counterparts around the state, they would be ecstatic to have $2.1 million coming in from places like Lancaster General Hospital, Franklin Marshall College, Pennsylvania College of Art and Design, a whole host of other nonprofit entities, but the, the largest two are definitely from Lancaster General Hospital and Franklin Marshall College. That is a significant, significant pilot amount when compared to other cities of our size in Pennsylvania. Other taxes include primarily the local services tax, the, the $52 a year tax that is paid by people who work in the city. Public safety revenues are things like parking ticket revenues, the contract that we have for the, with the School District of Lancaster for school resource officers, and a number of other, the fines also that come through the, the MDJ offices that are related to city ordinances. EDR revenues are primarily the building permits and also the housing licenses that we have for the rental housing program. Public Works revenues are made up of a, a group of miscellaneous revenues that are related to services that Public Works provides. The biggest piece of that, though, is the $4 million transfer that we do each year from the water fund into the, to support the general fund. So four of that $6 million that you see there is from the water fund transfer. And then grant revenues are things like the community development block grant funding that comes into the city, pension state aid that we get from the state to support the, the pension plans, and the highlight that I have there is on the HUD-led grant implementation. It's, it's a little confusing, but the, the way that program will work, that HUD-led grant will work, is the staff that are going to actually be doing the work, so there are six staff positions in the CPED budget, the Community Planning and Economic Development budget, that are actually going to be doing the, the lead implementation work, so doing, you know, they're lead inspectors, lead assessors, outreach workers, things like that are going to be doing the work. Those, 100% of their salaries are, you will see in the general fund budget in CPED. What's coming into, as revenue into the general fund, is money from that HUD-led grant to offset most of the cost of those positions. We're shooting in the dark a little bit, because 2020 is the very first year of this grant. We haven't even finalized the whole grant budget with, with HUD, so we're, this is our best guess at this point as to how much grant revenue will come in from that grant to offset those salary costs. The expense cost for all their operating efforts of that HUD-led grant, including their space rental and things like that, is going to be charged directly to the, to the grant itself, so you won't see those expenses in the, in any of the, the budget detail that you see. And then finally, the, the other big piece of the pie there is use of reserves, $2.9 million use of reserves. I'll show you on the very last slide how that compares to the 2019 budget, and also how we're looking to end the 2019 budget.
Patrick, what is the total we serve right now?
At the end of 2018, so through the audit, it was about $13.8 million. We're, you're asking me a question twenty slides ahead, Pete. No, so we're projecting a slight surplus for 2019, so we look, we're looking at that to be about $14.3, $14.4 million.
After the $2 million is out?
I will answer that question later on, because I, I have that, that five-year projection, it's just easier to
Okay.
answer it when I have the, the picture up. Okay, so general fund budget revenue and expense trends. This is earned income tax revenues, and like I said, we have seen nice, healthy gross, growth in the earned, earned income tax revenues. This slide goes back to 2011. If I took you back a couple of years, you would see that big drop-off that we had when the economy tanked, and then we started to see things rise up. So if you went back fifteen years, we were in the like $5 million range or so, and then it really dropped off, and then it started to pick up. So what's happening in this slide is a reflection of a couple of things. One, obviously, the overall economy. As a reminder for everybody, earned income taxes are paid only by people who live in the city. So we have something like 30,000 people who live somewhere outside of the city and earn some or all of their annual income in the city. They commute into the city, they earn their income. All of the earned income taxes that those individuals pay goes back to their home municipalities and doesn't support services that those folks are provided during the day or during their time working in the city. So this is only a reflection of the earnings of city residents. So, but the other thing is that this doesn't mean that because there's been this steady growth over each of these years, that every single person who's, you know, employed in the city is seeing similar increases, right? Not everybody is seeing three, four, or five percent increases in their, in their wages. So this is really an aggregate look at what's going on in the city. The other thing is that in 2012, there was a thing called Act Thirty-two, which required the consolidation of how, in, within counties of how earned income taxes were collected, and that process has really improved the Lancaster County Tax Collection Bureau's collection of earned income taxes from, large employers are allowed to file in one place in the entire state. So in theory, like, and I think this is like the case with Walmarts, there's, Walmart files their earned income taxes with one tax collection entity in Pennsylvania, and then they figure out how those dollars go back to all of the, each individual county and municipality. So that whole process, when you aggregate it all across the entire state, has helped to improve tax collection throughout the state and definitely within Lancaster County. And then the third thing that's going on, I think, and it's totally anecdotal, is that as new housing is built in the city, and new higher-end housing is built in the city, folks who used to live in Manon Township, or East Hemfield, or Lampeter, or, or East Lampeter now live in the city, they, we basically imported their tax dollars, because their earned income taxes used to go back to their home municipality, and now they stay in Lancaster City. So I think that whole sort of combination of factors is, is why we're seeing this nice increase. On real estate transfer tax revenues, this one is definitely one that just swings with the economy. So it's a reflection of the number of sales, or the volume of sales, and then also the sales prices of, of properties that are selling. We had this wonderful anomaly in 2018 where Park City sold. Its assessed value was $168 million, and we get one-half of 1% of that when it's sold, so it's $983,000 real estate transfer tax revenue that dropped into our lap in late November of 2018, which helped us have a slight surplus in 2018. Those are the kind of revenue sources that you can't count on. Hope is not a plan, you know, we don't expect that Park City is going to sell again in another couple of years, we're not banking on that. And really, what we're seeing in terms of the volume of sales, and I have a spreadsheet that compares this stuff back a decade or so, it looks like we're sort of capping out on real estate transfer tax revenues. If you took that Park City sale out, we'd be at about $1.2 million over the last several years. It is nice when big properties sell, but again, we can't really count on that happening year in and year out. On the expense side of things, so this is a breakdown of the 2019 amended budget and the 2020 proposed budget. So you can see the pieces of the pie are all fairly close, it's looking at salaries, benefits, operating expenses, and debt service. And on the, the right-hand side of the pie there, the 2020 proposed, is just pointing out that a few of the operating costs that you will see when folks who are diving into the line in and detail, which I'm sure every member of council did over the Thanksgiving weekend. We have a, an increased cost in the police bureau of about $105,000, and this is for the first year of a lease on new radios that they have to communicate countywide with the countywide communication system. On fire, as you know, we had a new engine that was put into service this year. Next year, we have for 2020, we have the first, we had a down payment this year, we have the first lease payment of that, of Engine Three, $75,000, and that's a seven-year lease purchase. And then in Public Works, we have a, a nice subtraction with the opening of the Public Works Operations Center in Lancaster Township. We can, we are ending the lease that we have at the former Farmer Supply Building over by McCaskey, so that's a savings of about $175,000. So overall, when you're looking at the amended budget, and the amended budget is basically amended with that one thing that you approved last week, which is the $600,000 payment from the general fund to our capital improvement plan for the Beaver Street Storage Facility renovations. So when you're looking at the, the 2019 amended budget compared to the 2020 proposed budget, it's an increased, 2020 budget is only 2.89% higher than that 2019 amended budget. So, you know, staying under that 3% level, which has sort of been our, our, our target all the time, is staying under that 3% level, but also think that 2.89 million is still, I'm sorry, 2.89% is still almost $1.8 million. So these increases that we're seeing, you know, like in the earned income taxes, it's a nice increase. It doesn't come near to covering the cost increases that we have, just with increases in salaries for employees, benefit cost increases, and operating cost increases. One other significant, big-ticket item in our budget is our spend on medical insurance. This is looking, now, those prior slides were all about only general fund, this is actually looking at all of our operating funds together, so all of our employees and the medical, medical claims cost and administrative costs for all those folks. In, this slide starts in, looking at 2012. In 2012 is when we went self-insured, so basically, the city is its own insurance company. When a, an employee or a dependent goes to the doctor, goes to the hospital, the billing comes through Capital Blue Cross, which is our, our third-party administrator for, for medical claims, they then send us a bill. We get a bill every single week that we pay Capital Blue Cross for all those claims. We have administrative costs, and then we also purchase reinsurance. So when a claim goes above $175,000, any individual claim, then our reinsurance kicks in and they take over the cost after that amount. Going self-insured has the risk of you have a really lousy year, and you have all sorts of claims, and you don't have money to pay for those claims, or they're just way higher than anticipated. Fortunately, for the first several years after we went self-insured, we were able to build up a pretty significant reserve. We got up to about 15 or 20% of our overall claims cost in a reserve. If you remember the presentation from last year for 2019 budget, 2018 was a bit of a train wreck when it comes to the self-insured fund. We spent basically $800,000 more than we anticipated in claims cost. We had nine, I think it was nine claims, nine individual claims that went above that $175,000, no, I'm sorry, at that point is $150,000, above that $150,000 threshold. So as you can imagine, these are, you know, significant claims, they're end-stage renal failure and cancer diagnoses and things like that. Those are obviously unpredictable, so we try to have as much in our Internal Service Fund reserve as we possibly can, but the good news in all of this is, over that time period from 2012 to 2019, total medical expenses have only increased under 3% each year-over-year. When you compare that to what's going on in the overall market, what employers are seeing in terms of their medical insurance premium costs, they're going up much more significantly that, on a, than that in a year-over-year basis. So that's looking at the, the expense side of things. On the, as a self-insured entity, what we get from Capital Blue Cross each year is what's called a COBRA equivalent for the, it's basically what we would be paying in a premium if we were fully insured. So the two bars on the left, the, the blue, in 2012, our PPO COBRA equivalent rate, so that's like our basic medical insurance plan for family coverage, was $22,161. In two, in 2020, that's up to $26,030. A big dollar amount increase, but in terms of the annual year-over-year increase, it's about 2.2% increase. So compare that again to what is going on in the premium world for a lot of employers, and it's significantly lower. And then several years ago, in 2018, we also introduced a high-deductible health plan, which has a, in next year, we'll have a deductible of $1,250 for an individual and $2,500 for a family. The city funds the majority of that deductible in a contribution. The city funds the majority of that deductible in a, uh, contribution to a health savings account, and then individual employees are using the dollars in that health savings account, including their own contributions, to pay the costs that are within that deductible. Because it has a high deductible, and even though we're making a contribution to a, an HSA, the COBRA equivalent rate for that is significantly lower. So it's actually lower than the PPO rate was in 2012. So over that nine-year period, we're actually seeing a way to, to reduce our expenses. And because we've been able to do that, is why you see a slide like this where the claims cost year-over-year are relatively stable. So we, you know, we can't predict when those large-cost claims are gonna happen, uh, but what we can do is try to do things to incentivize our employees, um, and indirectly their spouses and dependents to be healthier. The healthier you are, go to your annual physical, dental exams, all that sort of stuff leads to a healthier individual, which also leads ultimately to lower claims cost. So we have, uh, financial incentives built into the, um, the scale, uh, or the schedule of medical contributions for employees. Uh, we went from eighty-four people in our wellness participation plan up to two-hundred-and-fifteen employees in that plan. And basically, participation in wellness is, you've done a, an annual health risk assessment, you've gone to the doctor for your age-appropriate annual exam, you've had a, uh, you've gone to the dentist at least once in the year, and, uh, you have completed a biometric screening, which is weight and, uh, blood, uh, blood testing and all that sort of stuff. So we've seen a nice increase in the, that participation. And then in the high deductible plan, which we introduced in 2018, as you can see, in 2018, the first year that, we had seventy-one people, and our open enrollment for police closed just about a week ago, and we got up to a hundred-and-eighty-three total employees in the high deductible plan now. So we, that's actually a little bit better than we were hoping for. You know, a hundred-and-fifty-eight percent increase over that two-year period. And we, we are, in our contract negotiations, including additional financial incentives for people to participate in that high deductible plan. Basic concept is that the PPO becomes our, uh, whatever you wanna call it, our Cadillac plan, uh, and the high deductible plan becomes the, the, uh, the regular plan, and the contribution that employees make for the high, for the high deductible plan is reduced compared to that for the, the PPO. And all of this is being done with the idea that over time, healthier employers, employees, one, are more productive, but they're, will also have lower medical claims. We'll never get rid of the high-cost claims, but we can have much better, uh, much better and much healthier employees, um, you know, as we build these incentives into, into the system.
Patrick, just real quick, um, when you first thought about this with the previous administration and talked about it, we talked about best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, you didn't know exactly how it's gonna work out. Just without the specific numbers, anecdotally, has this worked out significantly better than you even thought it would?
So the participation in the high deductible plan is definitely better than, I, I thought it was gonna take us five years to get, you know, close to a third of the employees, and we're, we're basically at a third of the employees after, you know, three years. And I know, well, so in, in 2019 was the first year that, uh, the plan was in place for firefighters. So, uh, we had police, AFSMI, and non-bargaining employees in 2018, and then just because of the timing of when the contracts were, we brought fire on in 2019. I know from talking, you know, during negotiations and then during the open enrollment time period, um, a lot of the buy-in on the high deductible plan actually comes from employees talking to each other and the bargaining units talking to their employees. Really, in our negotiations this year, was when AFSMI, uh, across the table said, "We're gonna try to sell this to our employees because it's, it's a good deal for them." Most of the deductible is covered by a city contribution to the health savings account, um, and that, the term high deductible health plan, just the title of it scares people, um, because they think of, you know, the difficult world of high deductibles and having to, you know, shell out their own dollars. The concept of the plan is that even though we, the city is funding a big chunk of that high deductible, um, people make, uh, financial decisions based on the fact that they now have to hand over dollars, they're, you get a, a Visa card, um, but they're using, as soon as we give the dollars to them in the health savings account, they're, the employees, it's the employees' money. Um, the city can never pull that money back. So it's their money that they're spending now. When you're spending your own money, you make financial decisions based on trying to preserve as much money as you possibly can. Not by not going to the doctor, not by not seeking medical services that you need, but by looking at the actual cost of those medical services and looking for lower, lower-cost services. Now onto water, sewer, uh, solid waste and recycling rates.
Patrick, I have a question.
Sure.
Can you enlighten me, if a fireman has a massive injury due to a fire, does that go into a different, like, for example, does he exhaust, would he exhaust his current medical through the city and then he would have to go, um, and get his own insurance? Does he, does it go to Aflac?
No, so, any, any employee, uh, any employee, regardless of whether firefighter or police officer, AFSMI employee, non-bargaining, um, if you're injured on the job, those costs are covered by our workers' comp program. Um, we are, uh, we're self-insured for workers' comp also. Our, uh, reinsurance kicks in at seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a claim. Um, so we are, the city pays the cost of the, the, any of the medical claims and any of the wage loss for those employees up to that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar threshold, and then our reinsurance kicks in after that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Is there a time limit?
No.
So if, let's say, for example, um, he can't work, well, he can't go out and put out fi, fires, obviously, and maybe he would have to do office work, um, but he's still considered disabled. So would that fall under that, that extra insurance, or would it just stay under workers' comp? Because I know that-
It stays on workers' comp. Um, at some point, um, especially within, uh, police and fire, uh, there are also disability pensions, so you, it depends on how long an, an individual might be out of work. The disability pensions for police and fire come into play when somebody is, uh, when it's determined that they can never return to work as a firefighter or as a police officer. And that disability pension is an extra level of protection. The workers' comp, um, continues, so covering the medical costs even after somebody may, uh, may leave under disability retirement, there, it, it can get way more complicated than I'm simplifying it, but the, there's an interplay there, but, uh, between the workers' comp and the, the disability pension, um, an individual, uh, injured in the line of duty or on their work time, uh, does not, their medical insurance is never impacted. So we're not, they're not paying anything out of pocket, the high deductible plan doesn't count, none of that counts. It's all covered by workers' comp.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, um, so, uh, in water and sewer, I wanted to, to cover those first. Obviously, you know, I talked earlier about, uh, the proposed rate increases there for sewer and water, um, and in both of those budgets, while there are, you know, a couple hundred line items among those budgets, in sewer fund, there are basically, uh, five line items that are, that represent about eighty-four percent of the total increase in the sewer fund. So we have an increase in debt service, and that, as I talked about earlier, is a reflection of the debt service that kicks in from the 2018 bond issue. And we timed that knowing that we would, uh, or hoping anyway, that we would be finished up with the Public Utility Commission rate case for outside customers. So we, you know, we use 2020 as the time period as to when to schedule the first debt service payments from that 2018 bond issue. So we're seeing that increase. Uh, the nutrient credit purchase, this is actually a new line item that's in the sewer fund budget. Though, we'll get into more detail on that in the, uh, the department presentations, but essentially, um, when we have, uh, combined sewer overflows, there are, uh, we can purchase credits from other wastewater systems to offset what would otherwise be, uh, DEP penalties. We are seeing significant costs in 2019 that were completely unbudgeted for this because 2018 was the wettest year on history, in history, and we had a significant number of nutrient credits to purchase during 2019, which we've basically scrambled to do within the, the sewer fund operating budget. 2019 has not been as wet a year, so we're, but we wanted to budget something for those nutrient credit purchases in case we need to, uh, do them. Um, in the wastewater treatment plant, uh, section under, uh, well, in, in the treatment section of wastewater budget, we have three new positions that, uh, total about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar increase. One is a fog treat, treatment inspector. Fog is fats, oils, and greases. So we are required as part of the consent decree to, uh, have somebody who does those inspections primarily at, uh, food establishments to make sure food establishments and other, uh, other places are not dumping fats, oils, and greases down the drain, because that ends up in clogs and/or ends up in the Conestoga and the Susquehanna Rivers. Vehicle lease purchase, uh, and this is-
How often do they do that?
Uh, well, right now, zero. But it's part of the, part of the requirements that are coming on is for us to have that fog inspector. So it's a new, that fog inspector is a new position in-
Right, but how often will they do that?
That I don't know. That would be a great question to ask the Public Works folks who'll be here on Saturday. And then the other two positions are, uh, operator positions within the wa, wastewater treatment plant. And this really is, uh, these two, uh, new positions are, uh, being created, really as a safety issue. There are times now when because of the twenty-four-seven operations there, um, we have individual operators, uh, at the plant by themselves, um, and that's really just been seen as a safety issue, and we wanna make sure that there are at least two people at the plant at all times. Uh, and so this is two additional, uh, operator positions to make sure that, that can happen. The vehicle lease purchase, a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar increase in that line, uh, in the collection system budget, and that's for a new, uh, closed-circuit TV camera system, so they get, uh, cameras into the collection system, televise the system, and see where all of the-
Problems are.
Old infrastructure problems are. Sometimes not knowing is a good thing. In the case of the collection system, not knowing is not a good thing. And then in medical insurance, uh, we're increasing that, uh, medical insurance line item in the sewer fund by a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And the reason for that is because we've had, uh, multiple, two years in a row now of higher-than-anticipated claims, so we're increasing that budget for, uh, for medical. And then, um, so if you backed out all of those increases, the sewer fund budget would be increasing by about one-point-six percent. So really, those, that, those issues are the concentration of the issues going on in sewer fund. And then on the water fund, it's four line items that make up about ninety-four percent of the total increase. The first is debt service, and this, uh, is the first step of increase in the debt service in the water fund related to the 2018 bond issue. The next step comes in 2021, and again, that was timed with the idea that we would be finishing up the sewer rate case this year, uh, going for the water rate case, uh, in 2020, and hopefully have that wrapped up by the end of 2020, so that we have additional revenues coming in 2021, when we have another bump above that two-point-nine million. But this year, the two-point-nine million-dollar increase, obviously, is, uh, part of that anyway, would be covered by the proposed water rate increase. Professional services budget increases by about five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars of that is to cover the cost that it takes to take a rate case to the Public Utility Commission. And that's the, between the legal costs and also the engineering firm, Gannett-Felling, that we hire to do, uh, the rate study. Uh, and then there are two individual studies, uh, for work at both the Conestoga Water Treatment Plant and the Susquehanna Water Treatment Plant. So those would be more like engineering studies, uh, in that professional services line. Conestoga Water Treatment Plant Capital Outlay, uh, three-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar increase there. Part of that is the first installment, uh, so two-hundred-thousand-dollar cost for relining the membrane tanks. So we talked about the membranes earlier with the, uh, the grant resolutions. There, um, those membranes sit in, slot into tanks that have to be relined, we're at the point, because of the age of the system now, where that's gonna have to be done on a, probably on every eight-to-ten-year basis. So this is the first year, uh, first installment of that. And then, um, also for, uh, low- and high-service pump replacements at the Conestoga Water Treatment Plant is another, about a hundred-thousand-dollar increase. And then finally, trench paving, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar increase. Trench paving and restorations happen when we go out and we re-line, uh, re-line or replace water mains, and there's a trench there that has to get filled back in and repaved. We only completed about half of the trench restorations from 2019, so 2020 is gonna be catching up for half of that, plus all of the 2020 work that's going on. So again, you take out those four line item increases, and actually, the water fund budget goes down by point-one percent. So again, that's the concentration of where, uh, where we're seeing increases in water. So the impact of the rate proposals. The, uh, the yellow on the left-hand side, so on the, the proposed sewer rates, uh, the proposed inside rate would go to one-oh-nine-ninety-two, and that would be up from the eighty-one-forty-two, which is the current inside rate. What's, what's shown there is proposed for outside-city customers is not where we're gonna end up, but that's what was originally proposed to the Public Utility Commission for the outside customers. So as I said, the, earlier, the average, uh, sewer customer would see a twenty-eight-dollar-and-fifty percent per quarter increase in their sewer bill. That average customer that we use, uh, uses about twelve-thousand gallons of water per quarter. On the water side, uh, you see the, uh, inside proposed number at eighty, eighty-four dollars and fifteen cents, and that is a, uh, change from the current sixty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, I don't have a proposed, uh, in there for outside-city customers because that will, we won't know that number until we go through the beginning of the, the PUC process. So the average inside-water customer would see an increase of their bill of seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents per quarter, and the total of those two combined is forty-six dollars and seventeen cents. So I said earlier that, um, unlike, you know, real estate tax bills, uh, which you get the bill and you've gotta pay it, there's no way to mitigate the cost of that bill, um, in the water and sewer bills there is, and both the water bill and the sewer bill are based off of the amount of water usage. So, um, the, the darker blue, uh, cubes there, uh, show the impact of the water rate increase for that, that average residential customer who uses two-thousand gallons of water. So their, uh, quarterly water bill goes to eighty-four-fifteen, their quarterly sewer bill goes to one-oh-nine-ninety-two, they have a combined bill of a hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and seven cents. If that same, uh, individual or same family uses just two-thousand gallons fewer, uh, less of water in a quarter, they're gonna drop that, uh, their bill down to a hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. So when you look at the, how the increase in the, those two proposed rates would impact a customer, just using two-thousand gallons less of water reduces the increase by sixty percent. So there is a way for individual customers to, um, to mitigate the cost of that increase. And for the vast majority of customers, it's simple, easy stuff. Toilets that run all the time because the flapper is old. People who leave their water on while they're washing their, uh, brushing their teeth, uh, those of you who are lucky enough to have teenage daughters who take thirty-five-minute showers, um, if you cut that down a little bit, all of that stuff makes a huge difference in the amount of water usage. Our freshman off to Pitt, our water bill went down significantly, you know, somehow. So, um, you know, we need to get more information out to our customers about how, uh, you know, the impact on, uh, that they can have on their own, uh, water and sewer bills with, uh, some conservation in their, in their water use.
Quick question there, so a quick, two-part question. Number one is, how much does the city expect you, that, expect residents to take the advice that you just offered? And in the unlikely event that, um, like-
Everybody does.
The water throughout, the water usage in the city drops twenty percent, I mean, you guys have a lot of fixed costs, would, would you be in trouble if everybody took your advice? Would the, would the city's water and sewer operations be, uh-
So the answer to the first question is, I have no idea how to predict our, our forty-six-thousand water users, uh, or water, water accounts, uh, you know, how, how that will, how many people will do that. Yes, if everybody decides to cut their water usage by fifteen percent- Yes, if everybody decides to cut their water usage by 15%, yeah, it definitely has a revenue impact on the systems.
I have a question, Patrick. When they receive their bill, which I think you have gotten that email that looks a little on the complicated side, how can you make it simplified for them to understand because it can be confusing, especially with them reading the meter and-
I think the biggest amount of confusion has come in during the whole meter replacement process. And I mean, I had it on my own where it showed an amount of usage for the old meter and then the amount of usage with the new meter. So there are two lines on there. Unfortunately, the, part of the reality is that water and sewer billing is complicated because a water bill is made up of a flat rate charge based on the size of the meter that you have at your property and then the amount of water that you use. A sewer bill is based only on the amount of water that you use. But there are like 10 different sizes of meters in our system, anywhere from 5/8 inch meter up to a 10-inch meter. And so the, like, the rate chart that we have is, it's confusing. I mean, and there's not really a way around that. On the individual bills, we have had, we've actually had some discussion with the Public Utility Commission, the rate folks about putting a different kind and a little bit more explanatory information on the back of the bills to show, like, we have one customer in particular who has complained significantly about what does the number mean on the, you know, the, and it's the number of thousands of gallons that are used. And that's on all of our information except it's not summarized on the water bill. So there's some additional stuff that we can put on the bills that'll make it more user-friendly for customers.
And it will help that we're done, will soon be done with all of the water meter replacements. So individual, so we'll not be looking at an estimated bill and an actual bill. That estimate will go away and we'll just all have actuals.
So how long would it take? Just in case that question comes back up again, do you know roughly like what time do we all complete them?
We're, we're down to the last 3,000 right now out of 47,000 customers that need to transition to their water meter. And we will be doing a full court press in the next two weeks to get those individuals to call and schedule their appointment because we do not want to turn off their water.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Okay. A new line item that you'll see in both the water funds and the sewer fund budgets is the utility assistance program. This is actually the program that we've been working on through 2019. Milzey-Carrasco, Director of Neighborhood Engagement, has been working very closely with folks at CAP and a couple of other organizations with the idea that when individuals are not able to pay their water and sewer bill, the only, ultimately the only recourse that the city has is to do service termination, which is what PP&amp;L does, which is what UGI does. It's what utility providers typically do when there's non-payment. But we also know through, you know, just anecdotally, but also through the work that Milzey-Carrasco has been doing throughout neighborhoods in the city is that service termination is, can also lead to homelessness. So the, a property where the water's been terminated becomes uninhabitable after 72 hours. So obviously preventing homelessness is one of the goals that we have. It is part of the strategic plan to have strong neighborhoods. And we also recognize that individuals who can't pay their water and sewer bill have a lot more going on in their lives than just not being able to pay that individual bill. So the, the concept of the utility assistance program is we budgeted an amount in sewer and in water. The total of the two combined is $50,000. We will make payment to CAP, the Community Action Partnership, for that $50,000. CAP will put those funds with funds that they've gotten both through their own programs and ultimately over time, hopefully from some outside organizations and, and foundations to serve as a fund that city treasury folks, our customer service people can refer residents who are at risk of having their water shut off can get referred to CAP. CAP has their navigation program, so they can help these folks not just with the immediate thing of making sure that their water doesn't get turned off, but also assisting them with other financial planning and whatever other services they identify those individuals or families need. So we think this is a, you know, certainly compared to the water and sewer budgets, $50,000 is a small investment to try to create bigger change, help to create bigger change in, in the lives of people who are at risk of the service termination. And ultimately, you know, the success of the program will be residents avoid their water service termination, they get financial planning, the other assistance that they have, and they're not at risk of losing their housing. So the, the best home anybody has is the one that they're in right now. So if we can avoid service termination by doing this and commingling it with programs that CAP has in place, that will, should work out well. We do not typically do service terminations for non-payment between December 1st and March 31st. So this is a program that will really take off when we get into the spring of the year and we get to the point of reviewing accounts that are delinquent over the winter time.
Patrick, real quick, sitting on the property reinvestment board the last couple of years, just, I mean, that $55,000 might not look like a big number, but to have people that are in distress, I mean, some of those bills are $800, $900.
Yes.
I mean, that's a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, that can go a long way, that $50,000.
Yes.
And we talk all the time on that board about, and like you said, I love how you mentioned the fact that there are significant other issues that people are generally dealing with. It's not just, oh, I decided not to pay my water bill.
Yep.
But to be able to have that as a backstop and refer to navigation is a hell of a start, I think. So kudos to give the opportunity.
And this is all going through the Lancaster, Lenco, my home, the Coalition to End Homelessness. So this is a pilot year, and we're going to be working with CAP and the navigation team that is also supported through county investment, county block grant dollars that support the chart navigators. So we'll just be able to make direct referrals. And I think part of the, the opportunity with the utility assistance program that didn't exist before is that now we have something to, we can actually do. Because previously, we just had this roster of delinquent accounts and we're going out and shutting off water, and 72 hours would come and go. And if they were able to connect with services, great. And if they weren't, we don't know what happened. And so this is trying to mitigate that, and it's a dose of prevention into the system.
And so the, you know, our work basically from now until the end of March is figuring out exactly how the, that referral process will work. Treasury, you know, keeps close tabs on, you know, individual accounts and those that are at risk of having service termination. Then we have to figure out, you know, who all gets, gets referred to CAP and how does that, is that whole process going to work? But we've got several months to figure that out.
So Patrick, you'll be using that training to get them to understand how to conserve water and-
So the, all of the, basically the service of this will be handled through the CAP program. We can do some things through social media, maybe through some bill inserts, things like that about the conference, conservation piece. But in terms of this program itself, all the, the, the work itself is, other than the referral by us, is going to be done by CAP.
Thank you.
First typo on the dark brown square on the far right should be so they can become financially safe. You need an L on. Everything else has been really well.
I just hate it when somebody finds a typo and I'm, I'm going to resist the urge to fix that on the fly.
Thanks.
Onto the next slide that hopefully doesn't have any typos. So solid waste and recycling. The, the charts here are basically from several years ago when we were in a place where everything was working the right way in the solid waste and recycling system. The single hauler program that went into effect in 2006 was working like a charm. Number of individual single hauler customers that we had was, had grown and we're basically at the, we have all but a handful of individual residential customers now. Recycling collected at curbside was going up year over year. We saw nice increases there. We introduced yard waste collection about eight years ago, I think it was, and we had nice collections there at the curbside, and the amount of trash per household was falling. And now we have this issue with the recycling market and the thing, you know, the, basically, we don't know what all is going to be happening in the coming years with the upheaval in the recycling market and then also with the new hauler contract that we'll be negotiating during 2020. But we do know that costs are increasing because recycling had previously been generating revenue for haulers. Now we're basically paying to have recycling taken away at the curbside. So we know that there's going to be a cost increase there. So that's why we budgeted or proposing the $5 per unit increase, and that would apply across the board to, to all customers. There would still be a $50 per year senior discount for senior folks over 65 who complete the senior discount registration. So this is, I got these numbers from Mike Devaney just last week. Looking at solid waste collection, actually compared through, this is numbers through October of 2018 compared to those in 2019. We've only seen a very slight uptick in the amount of curbside trash picked up at, at the residential customers in the single hauler system. On the curbside recycling though, we've seen a big drop-off. So 12.2% reduction in curbside collection of recycling. 414, 414 tons less in curbside recycling picked up in 10 months this year versus last year. Good news of this is at the recycling center, we've seen an 81% increase year over year in the amount of recycling that's being taken there. This is, the, those two things, the curbside recycling and the recycling drop-off center are not an apples-to-apples comparison. We know that a lot of the folks who come at the recycling drop-off center are not city residents. Just its location itself on the, the eastern edge of the, of the city, right near Manheim Township. You know, you drive through there and you can tell it's not all city residents who are dropping off recycling. That said, we get revenue from the stuff that, the recycling that comes in there. We can sell that recycling because it's clean and segmented by recycling type or, or material type. But that's not, we're not seeing every ton that's not being picked up at the curbside we know is not coming into the recycling center. And then on the yard waste side, you know, just between 2018 and 19, we saw 21% increase. Some of that hopefully is more people knowing that the system is there and they can put yard waste out. Some of it is also probably related to the fact that 2018 was wet as all get out and a whole lot of yard work wasn't being done, including at my house. So that's kind of like a good news, bad news slide there with what's going on with recycling. But it gives you an indication of, like, we really are seeing a big drop-off in, in curbside recycling with the changes. And now on to five-year projection. This will hopefully answer some of Councilman Soto's questions about reserves and where we are. So those of you who have seen this previously know that we, when we introduce each annual year budget, we're looking out five years from the current year to look at all of the trends that we showed earlier, you know, real estate transfer tax revenues, earned income tax revenues, how are those going? And I have these sort of numbers in here as our estimates of how those things are going to change on an annual basis. The idea of this also is that while we're not proposing a real estate tax increase for 2020, we keep the real estate tax rate static for the entire five-year period. And it's really a way to look at what, how does our revenue picture change if we don't change the one tax that we actually have control over in, you know, in the five-year outlook? And then on the expense side, break things down into those four categories, salaries, benefits, operating costs, and debt service. Things like debt service, we know exactly what the dollar amounts are because we have our annual debt service schedules. Salaries, we have in the five-year outlook increasing at about 2.5% a year. And, and that's an indication of the increases that are in the labor contracts that we have, but also the fact that it's a total aggregation of all salaries. So when you see, like in, well, if you had the 2018 number there, you'd see it's much lower because the actual costs, we budget for all positions to be filled for the entire year, and we always have vacancies. We have seven police officer vacancies and eight or nine fire vacancies right now. So we always spend less in salaries than we actually have budgeted. On the benefit side, we show that increasing by about 3% a year. One thing that does jump out is that in 2021, you see this $19.6 million compared to $18.5 million. And that's really a reflection of an increase in pension contributions that we'll have to make in 2021. One of those numbers that the mayor says keeps her up at night thinking about 2021. And then on the operating costs, we have that average growing at about 2% a year. So as I said earlier, in the 2019 budget, we had a use of reserves budgeted at $2,449 to, to quote unquote, balance the budget, taking money from reserves to balance the budget. And where we show that we're actually going to, projecting that we're actually going to end up is about a $455,000 surplus. So our reserve at the end of 2019, we're projecting to be at about $14.3 million or about 24% of our annual expenses. The 2020 budget then, as proposed, would use $2.9 million, almost $3 million, to balance that budget, even if that, in my mind, worst-case scenario happens that we spend every dollar that we have expended and we, you know, we've raised the $59.7 million, we'd still have an $11.3 million reserve at the end of 2020. We will end up better than that worst-case scenario. And then what this shows then going forward though is that those annual uses of reserves to balance the budget increase because our costs keep increasing and that one piece of the pie, the real estate tax revenue that we don't have, well, is the, that is the only thing that we have control over. If that number doesn't change, we have serious problems coming down the road. Ultimately, where this leaves us is about a $16.4 million accumulated deficit over a five-year period if all of these trends continue on as they do. Those numbers don't look all that different. If you looked back on this thing 10 years ago, if you look out five years, and we have a big mess on our hands. So it's been a constant effort at trying to operate more efficiently. We've reduced the number of total overall general fund positions. We've refinanced bonds. We have, obviously, we've done real estate tax increases over the years to keep that, those sort of scary negative red numbers as far out as we possibly can. There are no magic solutions to this that happened in the city of Lancaster, they happened in Harrisburg, and that's some kind of tax reform or changes to our taxing authorization so that we can actually rely on some other sources of revenue than just real estate taxes. The other, only other thing I'll, and I guess I'll end with this, is just when you see the PFM presentation in January, I'm not even sure if this is good news or bad news, but they did their own, you know, in the, the information we've been sharing with them, did their own five-year projections, and theirs were a couple hundred thousand dollars five years out off of these five-year projections. So the good news is we weren't missing anything. We were, you know, looking at the right numbers all along. The bad news is that the numbers are as bad as we, you know, have been showing you for the last, you know, whatever, 15 years. So with that, I will, and does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay. That's the last slide. I always like to leave this up there for everybody to-
Feel nauseous about.
Depressed.
Patrick, just a question, I got really comment just on that last slide. I just wish, even after eight years, like, I still struggle to explain to people. I mean, you're showing a 2% increase or less in government spending year over year. So basically no increase each year, so not a bloated budget. And no tax increases, and you see those numbers just explode. But I still can't find a way to explain that to people. And I don't know what the answer to that is, but the constant feedback I get is, well, just lower your costs, lower your costs. And I, I don't know how to get across to people that we have locked in labor costs. That's just how government works.
Right.
And those numbers are not going to change, and we can project them. But even, like I said, after years of understanding, I still struggle to try to get that point across. It, it's not a, you, you can only cut so much to literally function a government. And where else do you raise revenue? And I applaud the mayor for the last year of beating the drum of how often do you have to tell people that, I mean, we have been- to tell people that, I mean, we have been, I, I would go so far as to say magical, the last few years and the creativity to keep pushing that number up, but the iceberg is coming. You can't keep doing, you can't keep refinancing bonds that you don't have. You can't keep getting $3 million payments from people you didn't expect to get. We're just not going to keep getting that. So, I, I just don't know how many more times we have to beg in Harrisburg to just kind of heed our call, but I just, I appreciate the mayor's leading on it, and I'll continue to help any way I can, but just keep doing it.
I think the, the good news, bad news, is that the National League of Cities just did a financial capability report for cities across the country, and what that report shows is that while cities are trending up in terms of their success, that, that is not translating into revenues on behalf of the city, which is the same story here in, here in Pennsylvania, but for very different reasons. And the structure of the way that cities raise revenues does not match sort of the current, the current reality, and that's in communities that have sales taxes, which we don't even have that. So, I think that there's so many things about the story that's happening nationally. We, we have just been pushing this out. In 2006, when we first got, when, the last time that we had a report that was done through DCED, and I believe PFM, no, different partners.
Management consultant.
Management, yes, management partners did that report. We were $70 million in five years out. And so, for us to, over the last 15 years-ish.
Yeah, this is better.
Yeah, this is better. But it's also not, it's just, it's going to continue to get worse over time because costs continue to rise as our, I mean, we, our surrounding neighbor, neighbors have been able to build their way out through economic development and adding new revenue and tax base. We cannot do that in the geography that we have. So, yeah.
I would argue temporarily, they're building their way out.
Temporarily. They're going to catch up to our problems.
They're getting close to.
And also, many of them do not pay for fire or full-time police coverage in the same way that we are mandated to do.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you.
Is that because they're in that third class?
Correct.
Patrick, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, how is it that we can change that?
That requires change in Harrisburg to change the Class III code, and I think that the changing, it's not going to be about lessening the services in the city. It's going to be about requiring other municipalities to stop with a free ride, for example, state police. So, state police services are not paid for by municipalities, and so, we've seen some municipalities drop their police coverage and opt for state police coverage. And that's a decline in service to, let's just be realistic, because there are limitations to how many state police can cover our county.
But it also has to do with the amount of people and residents that are in the city, but if you have to have so many in order to qualify for basic.
No, I don't believe that there are any staffing requirements specific to our police and fire protection, but there are, that are set in law, but there are best practice standards that we meet.
So, you was doing an exceptional job, so I just want to say thank you for your hard work. And the last slide is always, it's really telling, that five-year.
You're, you're looking forward not to seeing that last slide.
You can come back, you can come back next year, Chris.
Are there any other questions as it pertains to anything that Patrick provided?
Patrick, I think you always do a fantastic job selling, and I appreciate the clarity when she spoke. Do you remember when we met at House 360, it was a casual conversation.
Yes.
So, again, as an artist, I think way outside the box, and what I asked you was a question that said you'd never been asked, and I said, what is the actual cost per day for employees? And you had never broken that up. Have you since tried to break out that number so we could talk about it?
Now that you're going to ask me again, I can.
I think that would be.
I mean, it's a straightforward, you know, we're going to spend $62.7 million in 2020. We have.
So, if we look at the number of vacation days that people are entitled to, the number of sick days they're entitled to, the number of legal holidays that they're entitled to, if you could tell me that number, I'd really appreciate it. And number two.
I'm going to both fix the typo and I'll get you that number.
Yay!
How about that? You get a twofer.
So, the other question, or the other comment, is I totally believe in volunteer, volunteerism, and I do believe everyone in Lancaster, I think, loves their city. I don't think anybody comes to work begrudgingly saying, oh, oh, I hate my job. I think they actually love their jobs. I, I'm going to go with that premise. And, and my suggestion is, rather than continue to look at a red line that's very big numbers, I would introduce the conversation and the concept of donating one day for their city that they love, that gives them benefits, that gives them vacation days, that gives them health insurance, that gets a worksman's comp, workman's comp, that provides for their family, one day. Now, when I suggested that at House 360, you kind of laughed at me and said, why would a city man that's at 2:00 in the morning in the freezing cold digging up a broken water pipe want to donate a day? Well, they don't want to donate that day. They want the time and half or whatever's their agreed upon contracted. But a day when they're organizing their desk or they're talking, they could actually go to their boss and say, you know what, this one day, Wednesday, I'm going to donate to the city.
I'm pretty sure my response was something about the Fair Labor Standards Act, and that if somebody is working for us, we're required to pay them for the work that they're doing. I mean, I, I, and anybody else.
Let alone the three union contracts that govern the majority of our staff, and there is no way that somebody can volunteer a day and be on active duty, police or fire. There is absolutely no way.
What about clerical?
That, that is such a small percentage of our overall budget. It's not even worth having the conversation, April. And we can break out the staff for you, so there's a staffing schedule that's included in the budget. You can go through and look and see how much clerical staff we have.
So, there's no way we can introduce that as a possibility?
I don't think so. I like the out-of-the-box thinking.
You know how we get WW2s right every year? Do you know that was volunteered? Do you know years ago that was for World War II, and people were so proud? I contributed to our citizens that are fighting for the world. I didn't know that until 10 years ago. I didn't know it was voluntary. Now, it's not voluntary. Most of us complain about that. But it was voluntary. So, I'm, I'm not suggesting that you do it tomorrow, but I think we can wean into it. I think everybody is concerned about those red numbers. I know that for my staff, they don't get the 3.5% increase every city year.
Do you know what I would like, April?
Excuse me? I've listened pitch lately.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I've never been able, I never started anybody minimum wage, ever. I'm an arts organization. I pay all my taxes. I've always chosen to do that, okay? But I can honestly say, I don't give them a 3.5% increase. So, I know it's hard for people to keep saying, even though a 3% increase in fees or in solid waste material or whatever that happens, and our bills are adding $28 for this per quarter and $15, we feel it. We do feel it, okay? And still, if people believe in something, they do volunteer, or they help out, or they give a little bit more.
And what I would ask is that instead of putting the burden on the, the people that are working here every day to make those numbers work, that we actually put the burden on our legislators in Harrisburg to make this city be successful and to recognize the fact that this city is a regional asset that is benefits, the civic, education, government, healthcare, et cetera, center of this county and is solely supported by taxpayers in the city of Lancaster, except for the $1 a week that we get out of the local services tax. So, to me, it would be much more, much more efficacious for us to focus our efforts in Harrisburg rather than asking the men and women who tirelessly give and who could earn more money working someplace else in this particular economic climate, who remain committed here and show up night and day, 365 days a week, 24 hours a day, there are people working for the city, and I will not ask them to volunteer.
I didn't know how Harrisburg, have, have you gone to Harrisburg with this?
Monthly.
Monthly. And how is it listened? Aren't they listening to you if they, they are stretched and they don't hold the budget?
No, no. I think that we are getting a warm reception to a conversation about how to make a more equitable revenue streams while we are also controlling costs. There's really only two ways to control this. You cut or you raise additional revenues. The only revenue stream, as Patrick has pointed out, is raising property taxes, and that is not sustainable. It is not at all sustainable for many, many people who live in the city, who own their own home, and who have a fixed income, and I am very cognizant of that. We have to figure out a more equitable solution to that, and the answer is in Harrisburg, and we must hold our elected leaders accountable for the success, the long-term success of the cities. And these folks here from PFM can tell you how many cities would love to be in our situation because they're already in Act 47. And you know that the only way that we get access to the tools that those cities get is if we fail first, which is an absolutely ridiculous, ridiculous setup, so that you have to fail, you have to go through a 10-year period of decline before you have access to these tools? It is absolutely ridiculous. That is what we need from Harrisburg, and I would ask you to join me in those efforts. And I'm passionate about this. I'm so tired. This is my sixth budget, and I've been looking at these red numbers for, yeah.
Any final thoughts or questions?
It just makes me very excited, mayor, because I've seen you be that passionate right in front of the people who need to hear it, so they are definitely hearing.
Yeah, I've been told I've been too aggressive. Tell that, too.
Aggressiveness is passion.
I certainly don't tell men that they're too aggressive.
Mayor, I can only ask you to continue being aggressive.
So, I think that also covered all of the issues around the water and sewer and solid waste and recycling ordinances or resolutions, but let me know if there are questions about those.
And I guess we'll see everybody on Saturday, 10 o'clock.
Yeah, we still need to move a few things.
So, 70 and 71 and the three bills, are they all moving to the December 10th?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to move Administration Resolution Number 70, 71, as well as Administration's Bills Number 17, 18, and 19 to full council on December 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thanks, Patrick. That concludes finance.
And can you just remind us, Patrick, the meeting time?
Yes. So, Saturday, December 7th, the date that shall not live in infamy in this room. We'll, we'll start at 10 o'clock. Bernie sent me last week the schedule that we had last year. If I had thought about it today, I would have circulated to department directors. Basically, we want to have everybody, you know, pick their time slot for their own department presentation. So, we'd start at 10. We'll figure out the schedule of individual directors based on what their day looks like on Saturday. The concept of the presentations is basically to, for each department director to talk about the accomplishments that they had in their, in their department during 2019, what they're looking to accomplish in 2020 and sort of under the umbrella of the city's strategic plan, and then point out where there are line items that are significant line items now, not $200 to $500, but significant line items that are up or down by like more than 10 or 20%. So, I will have with me the line item detail if there end up happening to be line item questions. Department directors, though, will really be the ones running the show in terms of their own individual department. And then toward the end of that, I'll review the revenue side of things, both in the general fund and then across the enterprise funds, if there are any questions about that. So, we'll start at 10. I think we've typically been done by about 2 or 3 o'clock. It is the best and most informative day of the year for everybody who's super excited about city budgets.
You're my favorite, nerd. Everything about you, so. But just a reminder, it is open to the public.
Yes, absolutely.
People have an opportunity to be in this room to listen to any questions. I just always remind members of the public that want to come to that meeting, if you do have questions, their, the department directors are not magicians as well. They may not have a direct answer to your question at that moment, but you can propose the questions, and they can get back to you if it's a more specific question than what they're offering at that time. But I agree, I wish more people would attend because I do think it gives an opportunity to see a breakdown for departments, particularly police, fire, and other things that people don't get to hear from very often. Yeah, no, go ahead.
Can you clarify? Do you want these all passed at the same time on the 17th, or do you want them passed some of the 10th?
Yeah, we might as well just do them as one package of everything altogether, since they're all budget-related. So, the appropriations ordinance, the tax ordinance, the, those are on the 17th, and then these ones that are, oh, right, so two of them are resolutions. That's why you're asking the question. I'm catching up to you now, Bernie. Yeah, actually, they can go on the, I guess they can go on the agenda for the 17th, just so that they're all adopted all at the same time.
Would be four actions for council action with 17.
All, all five or just?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to, just because they're, they're all related to the budget, it makes sense to adopt them all at the same time.
Okay. So, I'm.
I have a quick question.
Is CRIS going to be discussed, too? Is that, or you said all departments, right?
Right. So, no, the, I mean, the CRIS, CRIS is a separate authority, so that, I mean, there may be issues that Chris Delfts, who's the, the Community Planning Economic Development Director, may respond to, but I mean, he won't, it's, it won't be about the CRIS.
But he might do something that.
I, yeah.
Some confusion with what are department heads versus what are authorities? So, like, is the parking authority, that's not considered?
Hey, Bernie.
No.
That's a part.
Correct.
Parking, CRIS is under, how does it retire, but it's still under the CRIS?
The CRIS is a separate authority, much like the parking authority is a separate authority.
Departments, what human relations department?
Administrative Services, my department, the Police Bureau, Fire Bureau, Community Planning and Economic Development, Public Works, and then there's also a budget for the mayor's office and city council.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Oh, you're set up different. No, here it is.
Mr. Ballantyne, there was also a request today for something else to be added to the Finance Committee agenda, the extension of the LERTA ordinance, and perhaps Jess would like to speak about that now.
You want to?
Sure.
We're looking at extending the current LERTA ordinance.
We have the microphone, so if you want to.
Patrick, you want to say, too?
No, that's not it either.
To just say it, the microphone.
Oh. So, all we're, yeah.
Before we get off, Chris's motions, didn't, wasn't some of this stuff introduced at the last?
No, tampoco. Tampoco.
See, and then it went away.
The first reading for the, the budget appropriations ordinance were done, but we're also adding another ordinance here that would be amending water rates, Bill 19, that was not, that did not have a first reading, so that will have a first reading on the 10th and potentially passage on the 17th.
And then the resolution.
And the resolutions that are related to the budget, 70 and 71, those would be, those would be delayed until the 17th for passage so that all the financings, all the budget-related finance items are done at the same time.
So, 17th would be when everything gets, is anything?
All budget-related.
Yes, we hope.
Can I suggest before we do anything else, Counsel Ballantyne?
Yep.
Officially do what you guys are assuming is already being done.
Thank you.
Can I hear a motion to amend the previous motion to move the two administration resolutions and the three bills to December 17th and not December 10th?
Motion to amend.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So, LERTA.
Actually, yeah, if you want to be technical, there should be a motion to add that to the agenda.
Oh, so now another motion.
Motion to add it to the agenda.
Clarify, are we making a motion to add LERTA to the agenda to be considered tonight, or are we simply having a conversation about it? So, we're just talking about it, we don't need to add it to the agenda.
The request that we had was to add it to the agenda for, so that it would be considered at the next meeting. I mean, it's council's purview whether or not they care to do that, but that was a request that was made.
I motion to move the LERTA discussion to tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Now I'm up. Okay. So, LERTA. We had been, well, so the, the LERTA ordinance, Local Economic Revitalization Tax Abatement, I believe is the, the last A, is a, a set of tax abatements that come into play for
is a, a set of tax abatements that come into play for property owners who have done improvements to their property. The alerted district is almost the entire city, it's not the entire city, but it's most of the city. And this is, applies for residential, commercial, industrial property owners who make improvements to their property. There are several different abatement schedules. The one that is most often used by residential customers or residential property owners is a seven-year abatement schedule. So the way it works, if you do improvements to your property, the abatement is 100% in the first year, and then it goes to 90%, then 75%, and then on down the road until it disappears seven years later. The LERTA program also helps to, you know, is an economic development incentive for projects like 101 North Queen, which also use the, the LERTA abatement. The schedule that is currently in the city code expires at the end of this year. The other taxing bodies, the county and the school district, also adopted the same LERTA abatement schedules as the city did 10 years ago. And so what this ordinance does is basically just extend the current abatement schedule for an additional 10 years. And then we're looking to have the school district and the county do the same thing with their schedules. It is the lone general fund impacted economic development tool that we have. And it, again, it applies for residential property owners as well as commercial and industrial.
Questions?
Is there a particular amount of interest that they would be abated?
Now, what, the, the idea is that the taxpayer gets a phase-in of taxes on the value of the, the improvements that they did at the property. So the, we don't have control over the assessments at the property, but if somebody does a $50,000 renovation to their home, and the county says that improved the value of the property by $50,000. Without LERTA, the property owner would see an immediate impact on their taxes to that additional $50,000 improvement. In this case, with LERTA, the increase in taxes that they would see from that improvement gets phased in over seven years. There's no interest calculation, it's just a reduction in their real estate tax bill over that seven-year period. We're now, I think as of the 2017 or 2018 audit, we're required to identify the, the, the cost to the city of the annual cost of those abatements, and it was a little over $200,000 in 2018. So in, in, compared to our entire general fund real estate tax revenue of about $29 million, it's kind of a drop in the bucket, but for individual property owners, it's a pretty valuable abatement.
And does that have anything to do with like the county assessments, or is this?
Yeah, so it's, so the county does the assessment, so which we don't have control over. But then those improvements, you know, the phase-in of the taxes happens at the, for city taxes, for county taxes, and for school district taxes.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions?
How often is that reported to the county, then?
So when property owners do take out a building permit, I believe if they're over, if the value of the permit is over $25,000, they're automatically going to the county so that they know improvements are being done at the property. And then they do their own thing within the assessment office to, to do a reassessment after the project is completed.
Thank you, Patrick.
Sure.
Do all three bodies have to agree to do it, to continue it? I don't remember if that's the case or not.
That's the ideal, yeah, that they all do it. I mean, we could have LERTA that would only apply to the city and to school district taxes, but all three taxing bodies, since LERTA was created many decades ago, have always approved all the way through. So that the taxpayer is getting the benefit from all three.
That's good. It's good to hear.
Questions from the public?
It does start with the city, though.
Yes, they obviously, they're, they're not gonna, the school district isn't gonna do a 10-year extension if we're not also changing, you know, doing the, doing the extension ourselves.
So the impact theoretically is even bigger, though, for the taxpayer, for the school?
Yes.
Cause I mean, that tax bill.
Generally speaking, the tax, the school district tax bill is about twice what the city's is. So the impact on the, for the property owner is, is twice.
Finding my way out. Wanted to add one more thing. Thank you.
Oh, you came up anyway.
So what I wanted to mention was, we were looking at potentially revising this to see if there's anything we can do to incentivize especially more affordable housing development in the city, since that's so challenging because there's a lack of state and federal housing subsidies. And this is like the only tool we have to be like an incentive for developers. We wanna really look at how we can maximize that, and we just have not had the bandwidth to really study the implications on this. So we have made a commitment to be looking at this as we go into the comprehensive planning process with Community Planning Economic Development, to really look at what the opportunities are to maximize this, especially for low-income residents in the city. Just to see what we can, what the threshold is that we can handle for abated taxes and how we incentivize the kind of development that we really wanna see for equitable economic development. So just so you know, there's been thought behind this. We just haven't been able to really do the assessment that we have to, to make the case to all the taxing bodies about what, what a change could look like going forward.
In reference to the affordable housing, you're just speaking of those that own property. We're not talking about anyone that at this point are living in low-income housing. I just wanna make sure that's clear, so the public knows, especially those that are looking for.
No, there's nothing right now in the LERTA ordinance. This is something that we're committed to looking at, to see if we can do anything because there is a lack of action in Harrisburg and in Washington around affordable housing support, just to see if there's anything else we can do at the local level. And it's gonna be modest, because y'all have seen the, the budget, there are only so many tools that we have. But is there anything we can do, especially to lead the way and to put some pressure on our colleagues in other places?
So the question is then, let's say LERTA ordinance gets extended, and then you guys figure out a way to kinda amend. Are you looking for a way to maximize it within the ordinance that gets passed?
No.
Or will there be opportunities to amend going?
If we amend, it would be an add-on and a changed schedule going down. And with, with more advance, and that's partly why this got so delayed and is coming to you now and being added to the agenda late, was that we wanted to try to see if we could change it in the current timetable, and we just were not able to. So it's, it's as, it's status quo for now.
There are individual schedules for the, the type of, the type of improvement and how long the abatement schedule is and the percentage decline in each year of that. So if there is a, a formula that ends up working to provide an incentive for affordable housing, that can just be an add-on to the, the current schedules that are already in the ordinance.
Has the state by chance looked into, I'm, I'm not 100% sure, cause I don't remember, but in reference to those that are senior citizens, that they do get an incentive in reference to their taxes, which obviously with this particular abatement, especially those that are not able to afford to fix, let's say, their sidewalk. Has there any development?
The state has a property tax rent rebate program that's funded through the Pennsylvania Lottery.
But I mean, not, not rentals, I'm speaking of those that own their property, cause I, okay, okay.
It's both a rental abatement and also a, a property tax abatement program for low-income seniors.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, I had actually qualified for LERTA when we first bought Walberry Arts, two years, three years, 32 years ago. And, but I can't remember, cause it was 32 years ago. So were our taxes leveled, and then after we did the capital improvements and investment? All I remember is one year I got this tax bill, like, unbelievable. So was it, was it being increased gradually?
Yes.
Okay.
The typical schedule is a seven-year abatement. So you get zero impact the first year, and it, the impact, the impact declines, which means your tax bill goes up each year. So the idea is phasing in the impact of those improvements rather than coming, coming in one lump sum.
Putting a frog in warm water is not boilable. They don't pop out, they just get boiled.
Eventually, the water boils.
The water boils, okay. But it is seven years, I thought it was a five.
There, there are a couple different schedules, and at that point, there may have been something very different.
Well, thank you both for the information. Hearing no other questions, I motion to move Administration Bill Number 20 to full council on Tuesday, December 10th.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes finance.
Mr. Harris, you're on, sir.
Thank you, Counselors. Yeah, so Administration Bill 20 should be, hope to have that within the next couple, day or so, and I'll get that to, prior to the meeting on Tuesday, so you'll have a chance to review that before the first reading. There was also an email that I received shortly before this meeting that had come down from the Bureau of Fire, and they were asking for action for the purchase of a fire truck. They would be completing a lease purchase agreement. I do not have any information on that. So it seems unlikely that we'd be able to act on anything like that, but just to give you a heads-up, that, that you might be asked to do that prior to the meeting on the 10th.
Mr. Hopkins, do you have any information on anything like that?
I do not right now, but I will sometime tomorrow.
If you can get it to us sooner than later, I mean, we could certainly get something before the Tuesday meeting if we had to do a special committee meeting to get it done, if it's that time-sensitive.
Okay.
Would that, would that be a bill, is that a bill? For that fund, so I'm trying to decide what we need, would there have to be a first reading for that? Or would it just be a resolution to go forward?
I can't recall if we did that by resolution or by, or by ordinance the last time. I think it was by resolution.
How about we let Mr. Hopkins figure it out, and he'll let us?
That's an excellent plan. I'm flying blind right now, as you can tell.
Thanks. Bernie, continue.
Certainly. So the Clerk's Report, council members, of course, I sent this to you in writing. Some, some of the things I've done in the last month, research. I researched about a half-century worth of council records to determine whether or not a street was dedicated to the city and on behalf of our land surveyors on the third floor, and was found that, no, it had not been. But I also searched alleyway deeds. Sorry, is that any better? Yes. I also searched alleyway deeds to determine whether or not a deed, an alleyway was public, as part of a similar effort. Council orientation, we had an orientation session last Tuesday, it was the second of three that we're doing. Seemed like it went well. We have, of course, three new council members that are coming on board. And I hope to, hopefully, when they be, when they begin, that they'll be familiar with the position. Transition in preparation of the changes that'll occur next month. I've ordered business cards and nameplates, I've arranged for email addresses, and collected information that will get posted on the city's website. I've ordered new updated council stationery, plaques for outgoing council members, and, and information on incoming officials was also provided to the Pennsylvania Municipal League. There's a myriad of small things that are involved in that. I attended the recent Parking Authority meeting and provided you a summary of that conversation. I advertised for the special budget meeting that'll be held this Saturday, and I ordered food for that, so you'll have lunch. Boards, Commissions, and Authorities' orientation, I met with Chief of Staff Jess King and talked to her about doing a orientation on a quarterly basis for new members of, that are appointed to the city's boards, commissions, and authorities. So hopefully, we can get some very basic information out about open, open records and open meetings, Sunshine Act, and parliamentary procedure that people may not be familiar with when they're appointed to these boards. Those are some of the things that I've done in the last month.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you for the orientation help with the new council members. You didn't say it, but you could've said it. You hope that they're up to speed better than I was when I first started, cause I didn't know anything. I'm like, not any, I still don't. But the, the, the amount of information that council elects receive now is fantastic, and the city deserves that. They deserve to have elected officials that can hit the ground running as soon as they start. And you've done a really, really good job with that, so they're very lucky to have you. So it's appreciated. And the last thing is, if the plaques were meant to be a surprise, you just blew it. So I just wanted you to know that I'm very happy I'm getting a plaque pretty soon, so I'm assuming one's for me, but may not be.
Oh, wait, I was supposed to get one for you, too?
You said three, I'm just assuming that maybe you want a.
Treasurer and two council members?
There we go, right.
That was the outgoing treasurer.
Yeah, exactly. No, but all kidding aside, thank you for the, the transition work that you're doing. I think it's very, very helpful for them. And I might hope that you'd continue to do the work with the, the Parking Authority and those meetings, because I think those conversations are gonna continue, especially for the new council members in 2020 and beyond. The conversations about parking and the nuances of, they're only gonna get bigger. So those have been very helpful, at least to me, and I think to other council members to have those pretty things on them. So I appreciate it. Anything else for the good of the order, sir?
No, Mr. President, there's not.
And we are adjourned. Boom. Last one, John.
809.
Motion, no, it's only, it's two, motion to adjourn, John. Do I have a second for the other guy who's not here?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.